So I'd like to open up here and schedule for 7:45 PM. Request by the Northampton Soccer Club for special permit for outdoor recreation use at Oxbow Marina, map ID 45-48, North Hampton. It's advertised March 31st and April 7th, 2001. Is the -- someone can speak for the applicant.
Hi, my name's Tim Stokes. I'm the president of the soccer club and I'll speak on behalf of our application. I have a little bit of a cold, so if someone has a problem hearing me, please let me know. Anyway, I'll try and keep it as short as possible. It's very late. But to summarize briefly, the soccer club has been at the Oxbow Marina on the site where we are applying to play presently since the early 90s. In about 2005, I guess, another soccer club from the greater Springfield area came and started playing on an adjacent parcel owned by the same property owner and created a substantial increase in traffic. A special permit for both clubs to play there was issued in 2007, got expired in 2010, and so we're here to reapply as a single entity. Western United, which was the other club playing down at the Oxbow on the new fields, has since vacated and there is now just the one, I guess, pre-existing club, plus the Northampton Soccer Club, at the Oxbow. And so our application is that we be able to maintain the fields that have been there since, I guess, the early 90s and continue to play there as much as possible. So that's the brief request. And we supplied a fair amount of supporting material. If anyone has specific questions about number of teams, number of games, schedule, et cetera, I'm happy to answer them as much as I -- as well as I can.
Specific question about how many fields are involved?
Well, right now, we have -- the sort of math that the league we play in provides for us is that for every 10 teams you have within your club, you should have one field for them. So we generally have about somewhere between eight and 10 or seven and 10 teams who play on a large-sized field and anywhere from one to four, one to five, who play on a small-sized field. The small field, we use Leeds Elementary School for games and generally for practices as well. So for our large field, which is at the Oxbow, we really need one for games and one for a practice area. Then we have another one, a sort of smaller field that we use for practices for some of our younger age groups. But we need one field for game use.
How many fields are you applying for?
We're applying to have two large fields and one small.
I think there's a confusion because your permit says too large and too small.
I see, okay.
That's why I think they're -- they figured them out with the only issue for grades. We were wondering what support fields is.
We haven't actually had any actual games on the small field at the Oxbow in, I think, at least two or three years. They've all been actually at Leeds Elementary School. So it's been primarily for practices, to the extent that it gets used.
So if the approval was for three fields, that wouldn't be an issue, too small and too large?
That's fine, yeah. Yeah, I mean, basically, if it was the status quo, which is what we have down here now, that's fine.
And one of the things at the last year, at Central Row One last term, it was the last summer.
Would've been October '09, something like that.
I think -- did you use these in the spring and in the fall?
Yeah.
But in the fall season, was it you had managed to have almost all your games off these fields?
Yeah, in the spring, there's a lot of competition for the city fields because we have to compete with baseball and lacrosse and so we're not able to use any of the city fields in a reliable way. In the fall, we can, and so I think in the fall of '09, at the time we discussed it, we had actually four games at the Oxbow. And the remaining ones were scheduled at Arcanum Field. I think we had one at JFK, a couple of JFK. So when there's city fields available, which is generally in the fall, we're happy to play on city fields. And in fact, most of our parents and players prefer it because it's easier to get to. But in the spring, we need to have those fields for play there. So by comparison, we have about this -- basically, for every team, we have seven games, seven home games. So historically, since, I guess, for the past, as long as we have records for us about eight or nine years, we've had between seven and eight, maybe nine, spring teams that would need a large field. So that's about 51, 49 to 56 games in total that we need to play at home. And when Western was down there, there was a sum total of about 83 games that needed to be played in the spring. And since they've vacated, it's obviously, you know, dropped the load quite a bit.
And they played in the fall, too, didn't they?
They do, yeah.
Right, and they played in the fall. You guys were on.
Well, they play -- their high school teams play in the fall because their kids play high school soccer in the fall. But in the spring, they actually put a heavier load on the fields in the spring than they do in the fall. But yes, they did play spring and fall.
Right, and they played all their games there in the fall, didn't they?
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah. I think maybe last fall, or at the time that the last fall that they were there, they started to schedule more games at ultimate fields, but they relied on the Oxbow as their main home base, yeah.
Where do they move to?
They've been renting fields kind of all around, Williston, Holyoke High School, a couple of other fields in Holyoke, some stuff down in Springfield.
Do you have a chance they're going to try to come back?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we -- when the permit expired, I mean, we made it pretty clear to them, we didn't feel like their presence down there was going to be viable. And we also made it clear that we felt that their presence down there was kind of jeopardized our presence. So we felt like it was -- we encouraged them to look elsewhere. And they did.
Any questions on the board?
Did you ever play games your team played and their team played, so that it was twice the amount of traffic at the same time? I mean, is this -- this will -- they're not playing will affect the number of events, but it won't affect the traffic for any single event appreciably willing.
You mean, are you asking were there games -- were we playing at the same time at the same place? Yes.
Yes, okay. So there is less traffic than this would play at?
Yeah, presumably. There'll be certainly less games and there'll be less concentration, yeah.
Is there any difficulty parking for you down there?
No, parking is not an issue for us. We have a whole -- you can see from the site plan there, there's that area off to the left, and that's a -- there's probably 200 parking spots there.
I guess my reaction to that is that makes me think it's kind of unlikely that carpooling is very effective for you because it's so easy to drive and park.
Well, yes and no. I mean, it's -- when we -- when part of the old permit was to do traffic counts and we actually did reduce the traffic count. There was a baseline count done in '07 at the time that the permit was issued, and we did show that we were able to reduce the overall traffic flow from that baseline count. And from our end, from the Northampton, it was easier to do carpooling than, I think, for the Western people because they draw from a larger geographical area. But we were -- I think we were pretty successful at that. I mean, it's true that if you were able to park right at the field, it's easier to just do that. But I think at the same time, people got used to it in our club to just get a couple of kids in the car.
Any other questions? Should we go to the public? We're going to go to the public. So for people in the public who want to speak, just find a podium, state your name and address, and we'll have a right to speak first. Nobody?
No.
Guys sat through two hours of meetings.
Phil Sullivan, 96 Island Road, Northampton, who lives the furthest from the beginning -- furthest from the edge of the road, has no children of young age with bicycles, but I'm concerned for my neighbors. I wish more of them would be here tonight, but that's up to them. The soccer traffic has improved, yes, absolutely. But now they're not carpooling. I don't care what they say. I stand out there, one kid in the car, my dad, back forth, back forth, drop the kid off, half of them don't even watch the games. The applicant, is it the Northampton Soccer League? It's not the owner of the property.
Actually, I'm sorry.
But I haven't seen a copy of the application.
The applicant is the Northampton Soccer Club, but the property owner is listed as, I think, Matthias Judas.
I thought he had to be the one that in the past applied for the permit because he owned the property.
That's not it, no.
That's not true.
Do you have a letter, see you or contact purchaser? That person can file so long as the property owner signs up on the application.
Okay. We were promised dates, schedules, times in the past. I haven't seen them. My other neighbors haven't seen them. We were told we would be told when there would be big tournaments. Haven't been told, I haven't been told any in the past. The car counts, I mean, you know yourselves from your records, they changed some of their games, put them off-site while those traffic counters were across the street. They put the traffic counter at where you could drive around it, you didn't have to go over it, and numerous cars did. There was conditions before, they were supposed to park at the certain number of cars off-site. Packaging Corporation gave them a place to park. I've got pictures, a lot of us have pictures. We've had the Florida Building Commissioner down there. Really does anybody ever use it? And if they did use it, they would leave one car there and take a bicycle down and all of a sudden you'd see that car go down and pick the kid up. Now, the kid might walk down, but the car goes down to pick him up. It's a narrow street. Because we complained, we got a lot of -- no parking signs up and down our street, but we never had a problem before with fire trucks, ambulances, emergency vehicles, or boats. That was our punishment. Now we're getting -- of course, we got big tractor-trailers on our little street because they deliver boats, they deliver gasoline, and we have the regular traffic that delivers our oil and all of our repairs and our people. Boaters usually aren't a problem, but now we're getting buses again because of the high water in the Oxbow. Of course, we got Mount Holyoke College, we got some UMass people, we got the Northampton crew. So we're just a little tiny street, very narrow, a lot of little children, and we still get all this. And we don't see the carpooling. The speed sign that they were supposed to have out there, they put, as you go into the marina and out at the beginning of the street, to slow people down on that. That's broken. Ask the police, they don't know anything about it, it's broken. And the door's open, it's a locked door, and it's just -- it's not there. Anything that we've been told by the soccer people really just hasn't ever come to fruition. Every time we ask for something, it's okay, we'll take care of it. What they say here is not exactly what's always -- I don't have a problem with Northampton Soccer. In the old days, I said this before, there's some new faces here, I helped mow the lawns down there. Rotary Club bought them a lawnmower. But they were polite. They didn't flip us off when they went -- when you asked them to slow down. They weren't combing their hair, eating a sandwich, drinking a coffee, texting and all that at the same time they were driving down. People were pretty courteous, as the boaters are. Most of the boaters are very courteous. They waved. They'll say, stop and talk to you if you're working out in New York. Not the soccer people. Get that kid down there, go back, get dad dinner, go back, get the kid. And it's awful. On the road, anybody that's been on it knows, it's like a lot of other city roads lately. They just let everything go, pot oils, and we're losing the road. It's sinking down. That's another issue of the Board of Public Works. The guy reels it like this. So if somebody did go off the road, they're down in the water. The road's washing away. I really don't have a problem with Northampton Soccer. If there's some conditions, and the conditions are met, the enforcement is done, we shouldn't have to be calling Lou Hasbrook now to let him know things that he doesn't know, that we were told weren't going to happen, that happened. This last fall, I heard Tim say that we only had four games down there, maybe, or something like that, in the fall. I had Lou Hasbrook down there with four or five of the neighbors. He couldn't believe it. He's taking pictures with all these cars. So I don't know. It's just at a point where it's enough is enough. Three years has gone by. I just think they have to have strict conditions, enforcement, and turn it -- listen to some of us when we do complain. And I just hope the city doesn't flump at all. Be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any. I wish more of the neighbors were here. Unfortunately, some of them actually have real legitimate jobs and work nights. Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Millie. I used to live on Island Road. My name is Laura Millie. I used to live on Island Road, and my son still lives there. I think -- I'm also representing a couple of neighbors who can't be here tonight, but I think as a planning board, I know there are some new faces, but when the soccer -- first of all, soccer has never been permitted for the marina. It's never been permitted. So this is like asking permission after the fact. And when they took the permit with three conditions. And they blew off two conditions. They didn't do counts and they didn't use the lot. So as a planning board, even a -- I mean, if they -- if you've already given them something and then they blew it off, why would you issue it again? It just doesn't seem to make much sense. And the thing also in -- that's a little frightening is that when Tim Stokes says in your intro that you want to play soccer there as much as we can, like, what's frightening about the Northampton Soccer Club is that they keep talking about, oh, we only had seven games, but you never talk about practices, and those are the worst. Those are like choo-choo of cars, just in and then out, and it's like, I don't know how many nights a week. So the games, who cares? I mean, it's the practices that are two and three nights a week. It's just too much. So it just seems like -- I would like it if the planning board would look at this application brand-new, as though no one has ever played soccer there before, and look at the road and look at the access, which is one road. And you're -- I think that if you were to use standards that you would look at with a brand-new application, you wouldn't put it through. I think that the soccer club would have to come up with traffic, all that stuff, and they just didn't -- like, the fact that we're doing this after is just what hurts. So I guess that's all I have to say. It just seems like you gave them a permit, it expired, they didn't do the conditions. What's the deal? Seems a little obvious to me. Thanks.
What's your -- you want to stop me? Oh, no comment?
Oh. I'm Linda Putnam on 86 Island Road. It's very difficult. It's a very difficult issue. The town needs soccer, it needs playing fields, it needs teams, needs kids out, but my feeling is it's not really -- this issue isn't really about soccer and exercise for kids, it's really about cars, about my car, about driving my car for three-quarters of a mile, between 15 and 40 miles per hour, that I have to have my car in order for my kids to play soccer and drive that car for three-quarters of a mile. It's -- I don't know why the soccer club can't organize a carpool at the -- the factory gave a parking lot. The people from soccer come, park, they drive their kids down to the soccer field, drive back, park their cars. And then maybe the parents walk down, then they come back, or then they drive, they come back, get their cars, drive down, pick up their kids, and drive back. There are four trips. We have a friend who has a friend whose kid plays soccer, and she said, and no, she knows us, she said, "Well, are you involved in all the brouhaha about the Island Road?" And the friend said, "Well, yeah." I mean, she said, "Well, do you park your car and have your kids walk?" She says, "No, I wouldn't have my kid walk down that road. There's too much traffic." It's a real problem. I mean, I don't know why the soccer club can't get together. They know when their games are, they know when their practices are. Why they can't get some of the SUVs and the vans that are driving down there with one kid in saying, "Look, we're going to carpool up and down the road." That we'll have a -- you could have two cars, two vans going down and back, you know, so that there's always a trip going up and down, and that the van -- that the kids wait for the van, and then six, seven kids can be driven down at once. It can be worked out if somebody wanted to work it out. It just doesn't seem that people want to give up their car. I mean, it's like, I have to have my car drive three-quarters of a mile, and they drive very fast. I don't -- and they won't -- we have a -- our barn is across the street from our house, so we're always going back and forth from the house to the barn, the house to the barn. You know, the dogs, the road is full. People don't stop. You're standing there getting ready because you've got your tools, you're just trying to walk across the street, and zwham! I mean, they are really going very fast. They're late. I raise kids, grandkids, great-grandmother I am. I mean, I understand how important it is for the kids to have a place to go. I don't want kids not to go. I want the adults that are dealing with these children to have a little bit of common sense and consideration for our road. And if they can come up with some kind of a plan that is real. I don't know why people can't walk three-quarters of a mile, and I think it's good for the kids. They're sitting in the car, sitting in school. They should warm up a little, walk down the road. It's not so hard, you know? But for some reason, it seems to be very difficult. So I don't know what -- I'm putting it out to you, I don't know what to say. I don't know how you're going to know what to say. It's -- if it led with the -- if there's some kind of a condition on the permit, that the cars are controlled by the soccer club, not by the residents on Island Road, we can do nothing. You know? Nor do we want to do anything. It's not an antagonistic relationship that we want with anybody who comes down Island Road. It's a road, you know, for crying out loud, you know? But it has this problem, it's very, very high use. And I -- period, blah, blah. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Patrick Foley, 115 Island Road. Just moved in months, six weeks ago, so I don't have a lot of firsthand experience. I had a little bit of knowledge of the situation. And we're expecting our first child in June, and so I'm definitely very concerned about all the traffic. Let me just say, I'm so pro-soccer. I got introduced to soccer by some great professionals at the age of six. I've been playing all my life. I love fields. I've lived here for like 20 years, and I tell all my soccer friends, you know, about where I came from, you know, where there's just soccer parks and tons of fields, and that's what I want for Northampton. And I've been on teams where we, I mean, we have a really hard time getting a field where we sometimes not even able to put in a team because, you know, fields cost a lot of money. So I'd love to see, you know, more fields, and -- but I definitely appreciate like what Laura was saying, like, to look at this from ground zero, you know, how much traffic, if any, you know, should be allotted to, I mean, how much traffic already is on Island Road? And I'm just starting to get a little bit of an idea. I guess I missed it. We thought it was -- my wife Nina was at home and there was just -- she came out and there was just a line of cars, you know, a week or two ago, and she called the neighbors, "Is this, would you say, like a funeral procession or something?" Didn't know what was going on, and, you know, told by the neighbors, "Oh, this is the soccer traffic." Well, it turned out it was, and it was lacrosse, which didn't have a permit. And the more and more I'm starting to just start to get some stories, I won't take up a lot of time with stories because I don't know, but I hear a lot of -- there are agreements made just that are constantly broken. They get allotted for so much, but there's a lot more games. I know as, you know, playing an adult, you know, league, you know, where we were in a situation where we had a playoff game and we didn't have a field, and we were playing East Long Meadow, and we said, "Hey, why don't we just call the refs and say, yeah." We went down to the Oxbow and played. So once the fields are there, you know, I guess just looking at what the total amount of traffic, I just want to say that I am concerned. You know, I knew a little bit about this coming into it, so, you know, it's not that I don't want any soccer, but the threshold of my door to the street is 10 feet. And I do have a new baby boy coming, and, you know, I'll try to make that all safe, but I guess the number of the cars is concerning, and I'm still just kind of catching up with all this. I mean, I'm hearing that the marina that's allowing this is actually double what they were allotted for. So I do know that it's a lot of traffic, and I'm concerned, and I just really would appreciate you to really look at what is a good idea and how many games, if there are any games, are allowed. Thank you.
John Carey, 99 Island Road. I'll echo all the points that were made, and I'll ask you as a planning board to disallow this because the road cannot handle the traffic, period. I mean, it's just not safe for anyone, and, I mean, there are no sidewalks. We have children, we have pets, and it's a grave concern. There's already a lot of traffic, and they're asking to be allowed officially, even though everything they've said in the past has been really for naught, because nothing has been So I'm asking you to take that into consideration as a planning board. Thank you.
My name's Krista Holden. I live at 174 Island Road, and I've lived there for 10 years. And when I moved in, I noticed traffic, but was bearable. I could still walk on the street. Then one day, I took a dear friend of mine who lives around the corner, on the east side street of Island Road, and lived in a wheelchair, she just died. Took her for a walk because she loved the Oxbow Marina, the sight of the mountains there and so forth. And we didn't get as far as the -- over the highway bridge when two or three cars going to soccer practice came by, and it had rained. They didn't slow down, they splashed all over her. And she was in tears, and she asked me to take her back. This is just one little incident. I live in a dangerous curve, the only curve that Island Road makes before it turns a little bit left. And I have to wait for people to come my way when I come back from town and want to turn into my driveway. It is so dangerous. I fear with all the people that live on the street that have little children. I don't anymore. But I take care of my daughter's dog sometimes, and unfortunately, the temporary electrical fence we had put up for the two weeks broke, and he got away and got -- almost got hit. I know other people on the road do have dogs, and I fear for the dogs, I fear for the people, I fear for the children, and I fear we've been incredibly discriminated against when it comes to other places in town. For instance, we now have, on my property, on my property, I have two "Do Not Park on This Side" signs. In front of my house is what I believe was donated by the East Hampton Savings Bank, one of these electronic speed signs, ruins the view, ruins, takes up road on the side where people could walk. It's never been used. I think, I don't know, two, three times. Ridiculous. But when it comes to other things, it seems like we've been forgotten. This soccer thing should not go on like that, and now to know that there are other sports that are being played down there. And my last point is, when I bought the house... And my last point is, when I bought the house, I bought it because I absolutely fell in love with it. After I found out then what the restrictions were, and that's another issue I have with real estate organizations, that I wasn't, the, the limitations weren't disclosed to me, so I was restricted to begin with and couldn't fulfill part of the dreams I had for this house. In the meantime, and I, my new neighbors, just, I forgot, I know it's Nina, but-
Patrick.
Patrick. Um, I sort of hear a little bit, had they known, they might have thought twice about buying the house. Our, the value of our houses on Island Road, as it is, has gone down in the last ten years since I, I moved there. Everybody would say, what about the kids, can they ride their bikes? And I would have to say, go to Ferris Avenue and the one little side street, and maybe you can, but I certainly would not, um, allow my small children to ride bikes on that road. It's dangerous. And, um, as much as I love it, as much, I am European, and I totally support children's sports. I have two grandsons, they play sports. I think it's more important than sitting in front of their computers, and I think soccer is a must for children, it's the healthiest sport there is. But there have to be other places in North Hampton where they can play. Or, if they have to play there, like they did ten years ago, when I say the traffic wasn't what it is now, um, for this soccer organization, to please talk to your members, remind them, this is a street where people live. It is not a throughway to the soccer fields alone. Four times, I mean, people, really, somebody said it here before, you take your son, you drive back to do your errands, you go back to pick up your son or whatever, and you drive back, that's four times past the road. And people are always in a hurry, you can say what you want. People are in a hurry, and they drive too fast. Plus, I don't know where all the trash comes from. It isn't from people on our road. It, it, we don't go out and throw our plastic cups and, and containers and styrofoams, this and that, on the street. It comes from the traffic. And I do believe, if the soccer club talked to their members, excuse me, I'm getting excited, there's a way that we could get along. It's just, it doesn't have to be this, you know? There is a way, and there ought to be a way, and I do believe it could be done, but I do think that soccer people somehow have it for us. They just want to show us, we play there, and we can do on the street what we want. I'm sorry, it's my opinion. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Hi, I'm John Corn, I live at 86 Island Road, um, with Linda. Linda and I have lived there for two years, um, and it's been quite an initiation to, to come out of our driveway, to cross the street, and to have to almost throw myself back into safety. We all know what it's like to be a soccer mom or a soccer dad, unfortunately. Um, I, when I, when we had young kids, I remember what a tremendous hassle it was to get the kids to where they had to go, to get to the stop and shop, to do the shopping I had to do, to get back home, to do whatever errands I had chores I had to do, go back and get the kids. They drive fast. They drive fast with a cellphone, and they're talking on their cellphone, or they're eating their dinners. It's, it really is extremely dangerous. There's no exaggeration going on here. It's a very narrow road. Many, many of the houses butt right up against the road. You come out your door, and if you're not extremely careful, you are really in danger. So I agree that it's not, in a, in a, in a smaller and smaller world, it's not a good idea to say no to, uh, many, many families whose kids need exercise and recreation. But I don't agree that it should be voluntary. I think the planning board should say that the soccer club should have a bus that sits at the end of Island Road, and that all of the kids and parents who are gonna go to the game or go to the practice, get on that bus and go down to the fields and play their games, right? Or they do their practices and then come back. Or they have a maximum of whatever it should be, four buses, right? But that'll be safe, right? The bus driver will drive slowly, it'll be very visible, it'll cut the traffic down to nothing. So that's what I hope you'll do. I don't think it can be voluntary. The last two years while we've been there, voluntary didn't work. You go to the parking lot that the factory offered to them, it would be empty, except for the trash, right? And the people would be zipping back and forth. As, as someone has said, four trips for every kid, that's a lot of trips. So I, I hope you'll take us seriously, and I hope you'll impose some very, very serious and enforceable regulations. Thanks.
Uh, sorry, Pat, I, Tim, I'm, uh, just, just talk about this. Just, uh, for the record, just a couple things. One is that we actually, it's been stated that we did not conform to the conditions of the original permit, um, by not performing traffic counts. We in fact did, but we did them in the spring only and not the fall, because the spring is the period of heaviest use at the Oxbow. It accounts for Western United, the North Hampton Soccer Club, and also some marina traffic as well. So that's when we did the traffic count, so that's just for the record. Secondly, the other condition, which was about the use of that ancillary lot, I think you guys know at this point that one of the main disputes about this was the way in which that language was written in the permit, and the previous building inspector had a lot of difficulty even knowing what to enforce. Um, the other thing I'd just like to point out is that the original permit, uh, had as its benchmark to bring traffic or game use to 2003 levels. And as I said earlier, it's been pretty consistent from about the fall of '03 to the present, that we have run around twelve teams in total, eight of which have played in a large field at the Oxbow. Um, and in fact, since 2005, 2007, we've been using Leeds Elementary School much more for our smaller teams. So we are at now and probably below the 2003 levels for the intensity of use at the soccer fields. Um, then lastly, the, someone has mentioned the question of running a bus. We actually looked into that, and the expense involved for us in doing that is just not tenable. It costs about $1,200 a weekend to run a shuttle bus from the, uh, from the parking area up to the head of Island Road down to the fields, and that would not also account for any kind of weekday use either. So, for us, that would be something in the range of perhaps $20,000, $25,000 annually. Okay? Thank you.
Laura Milligan, again, if we're doing for the record, the permit stated you needed to have spring and fall traffic counts for three years, and I think they did spring and fall one year, spring the next year, nothing the third. So if we keep it on the record, let's keep on it.
Uh, the board has, the board has the rest. Hi, Louis Hasbrook, Building Commissioner for the City of North Hampton. I'd like to, um, request that the board place some very specific conditions on the special permit. I'm, I'm not opposed to a special permit for soccer at the fields, but, um, I guess in a very selfish way, I'd like the conditions to be as specific as they could, because without very specific conditions, it's gonna be extremely difficult to enforce the, um, the, the terms of the permit. Um, and I think that, um, I, I would, I would agree with almost all the residents that spoke is that there isn't a lot of carpooling. I've sat down there, and I don't have a set of specific numbers, but I've formed a, a pretty strong impression that most people don't carpool, and, um, on the times I've been down there, I've watched specific cars come and drop the child off, leave, come back later and pick the child up. And if those sorts of trips could be avoided in some fashion, um, I think it would improve the traffic situation. In terms of the sorts of specifics, I'd like to see that there be traffic counts on a regular basis. I'm not sure if the, um, speed count, the speed meter that's down there now couldn't be used as a traffic counter. I mean, it certainly senses cars coming and going, and I suspect that, were it functioning regularly, that they could get a count off that. Perhaps they can, uh, instead of the, the relatively expensive, um, method that they used to count cars the last time they did it, um, a more casual way of hiring someone to sit with a clipboard and a, um, and a punch counter, uh, would be more effective than some, just debates about a lot, a few, too many, not enough. And then the last thing that I'd like to, uh, would suggest is that there's some, um, uh, that, that the soccer club present a schedule as early as possible in the process and, and, and provide an updated schedule potentially to the building department, so that we can track the number of games. And also, I think, um, I, everything's been sort of presented in terms of the number of games, but I think practices are, um, as significant as games are certainly can be. I'm not sure how many, um, children participate in the practice, but, um, potentially half the number of a game, so, so a count of the number of practices that are planned also. And those are the sorts of conditions that I'd like to see. I think that the parking at the, in the PCA lot, um, was an idea that had no future. I, I personally wouldn't walk on that road. It's not a pedestrian-friendly road, and I think the idea of sending sixty or seventy children down that road and back is, is, is pretty ludicrous. I mean, potentially, carpooling from there didn't seem to work out. I've never seen more than one or two cars parked in that lot, so I don't believe it was ever utilized. And then the one other thing that we might ask of the soccer people is a count of cars parked at their field on, you know, every, um, day that there's a set of games. I'm not sure, again, put the burden on the soccer club to provide counts, and I'd be happy to have our office collect that information.
So, fine, but that one, count the cars on the field side to differentiate from the cars parked on the marina side.
Right. And there is, there is a pretty clear differentiation. If you go under the underpass and look to the right, it's clear that cars focused on soccer are generally parked on the field side. And, uh, questions?
Just a, just a point, point of information, just about schedules, is that we can, we can provide schedules as soon as we get them, but we don't generate the schedules for the games, the, the league we play in does, and they're generally available, you know, two weeks or so prior to the beginning of play. We can forecast pretty accurately the number of games just by the number of teams we know are gonna be playing, because we know that each of them will have about six, six or eight games at home, so.
Right, I think the only, and a couple people said, really said it's wrong, the practice schedule is also as important as the game schedule, because that also generates, you know, the traffic. And often, for the games, the parent stays, for the practice, the parent drops off, leaves, and back. So the practices generate probably twice as much traffic as the games do.
Phil Sullivan again, I'll get up to where I'm supposed to be here. Uh, but just, just a couple of things I'd just like to ask. My conversations with Tim earlier this year, uh, we, uh, pretty much we talked about the lower fields only, is that still what you were applying for?
Yes.
Not the upper fields, the Underwood Field, the old Underwood Farm.
Right, we're talking about the fields.
When we talked historically with them being down there, that's where they were, is on the right.
By the tennis courts.
Right, by the tennis courts. Uh, I just wanna clear that up, make sure that that's what they're applying for.
That's, that's the picture.
Okay, I haven't seen that, uh, because technically, it wasn't a problem until those other fields started being used. All of a sudden, the, the Underwood Farm went under, or was sold, and Matthias Duda bought it and decided he wanted to make some money with it to pay his taxes, I guess. And then, uh, I wanna, I wanna make it clear, also, I believe, Tim, that Mr. Duda does charge you for mowing, irrigation, fertilizer, it's not free.
We pay him to mow the field and to line the fields, yes.
Okay.
But we don't.
I just wanna make sure people don't think he's being a benevolent guy and just giving it to you totally free.
It's also, we've also made, he's also made clear to us that we can hire a third party to do that if we want.
If you wanna pay for it.
We don't, well, yeah, we pay him or we pay whomever, but we don't have, we don't have to pay the Oxbow Marina to do that.
Right.
We could pay somebody else. We do it because it's convenient.
Because in the old days, you did mow it yourselves, and that's when we bought the lawnmower for you, I used to do that with my lawnmower.
And Phil Sullivan, you can talk to us and not-
Oh, I'm sorry, but now it's, it's, it's a commercial operation, I just wanna make sure that that's understood. It's a commercial operation, and, uh, even though it's for North Hampton kids, it's still being paid for, and, uh, and the traffic counts, uh, Sullivan, they even admitted at one time that the traffic counter was broken, I remember that in the fall. That's it, thank you.
Just, just for the record, we, we pay Oxbow Marina about $5,000 annually for lining and mowing, and that's both for spring and fall season included.
Yeah, there was one, one thing that I wanna talk about a little bit, and I sort of forgot when I was up here, and it's a little bit of a touchy issue, and, uh, but it was sort of brought up a little bit, just knowing the importance of, you know, the actions and how the relationship, as well as the safety of the street go, as it would even relate to, um, to real estate value. You know, and it's all public record anyway, but, you know, my wife and I, we were searching for a house for two, three years, and, uh, we really couldn't afford very much, and, uh, and the house that we did purchase there is, is beautiful, needed no work, and, uh, was going $50,000 under assessed value, and even more than that, under what it was, you know, sold for last in 2005. Of course, the economy's down, and, you know, I mean, the flood plain, it's always been a flood plain down there, but in other words, you know, I watched this house drop, you know, $10,000 at a time, you know, starting somewhere in 240, 230, 220, 180, still nobody, you know, you know, was gonna make an offer. I have heard now that actually a few potential buyers backed out because they, they found out, you know, about the soccer history, and, so anyway, we did get, come in at a steal of a price, but, you know, it's, I'm also speaking of just what that does to the whole area. If property value keeps dropping, someone is relocated with their job and has to move, they have to take a, you know, potentially a cut in, uh, you know, in their house value because of, because of the issue going on here. So just, just knowing that there's many, many aspects to, uh, what you guys are deciding here. Much, thank you.
How does the, how does the traffic count work to help the traffic?
Oh, you could talk to us.
Oh, how does the traffic count, may keeping the traffic count, how would that affect how many cars go by? I mean, it just seems that that's already been known, that there are too many cars.
Well, it's too many, to, to, to put a number on it makes it easier for us to know, you know, how many cars, how many trips are generated by soccer, because there's a marina down there, as you said, that which generates its own traffic.
I see.
There are other things going on down there that generate its own traffic, so the idea is try to figure out how much of that is soccer and how much of that is something else. Because a lot of the traffic that you're seeing, soccer, could be marina, that's-
So, so basically, it's a more of a waiting game to see-
Just to figure it out.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
I have a question, but I was gonna add some statements.
Uh, you wanna make a statement? Sure.
Yeah, it seemed to me this was gonna be-
Yeah, it seemed to me this was going to be kind of simple, because Western United was the bad guy and they're gone. But I, I don't think the problem is that simple. And I do think that the practice is worse than the games. If we set tough conditions, there's still going to be a lot more traffic there. I wish I knew how much of the traffic was really due to the marina, which shouldn't be there either, than it was to, would be for the soccer games. I think, well, I, I happen to be chair of the planning board when we had the hearing three years ago, or three and a half years ago. And this room was full of little soccer kids in their soccer uniforms, and there was a lot of pressure. And at the time, I thought that we should grant him one-year permit to see how it did. We did, we granted a three-year permit. I don't think they met the conditions tonight, but I don't think that they should play soccer down there at all. But I'm going to vote against granting this special permit.
I have comments, but I wonder if we should close the public hearing.
You can make, certainly make an motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, one last comment. Again, Louis Hasbrook. I think it's really important to distinguish the soccer traffic from the overall volume of traffic. And I'd, I'd really encourage if the, if, if the permit is granted, that the, that the board put the burden of counting the soccer traffic on the soccer club. I mean, they're the applicant. And because we're never going to be able to figure out whether the, the volume of traffic is because there's people playing soccer down there, or if the traffic, the soccer traffic is incidental to the increased volume at the marina. Thank you.
Do you think that their count will be reliable? I mean, do you have any worry about that?
I, I basically assume people are trustworthy. I mean, I don't think, I think people will be honest about it.
Sorry, I think we're going to close the public hearing.
Just one technical point about the counts?
No.
Okay, just the, the previous permit mandated the counts be performed at certain points, which were both on Island Road, so that there was no way to discern who was going to the marina, who was going to Western United, and who was going to Northampton Soccer, or the crew, or whatever else was going on. So.
So, the motion, second, close the public hearing. Any more discussion? All right, I'll favor. All right, so the public hearing, public comment session is closed.
Yeah, actually, I have several comments. First of all, I guess, you know, I was certainly around during the last debate on the soccer club. And I have to say that, to me, I guess it doesn't matter who or where the, the traffic's coming from, it's just too much. And, you know, soccer shouldn't have been down there in the first place. It was long after the fact that they actually had to come for a special permit. And I think we tried it, and I think it's pretty clear it didn't work. I think we're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. And I, I just really feel strongly that it's not fair to the neighbors. And I think if you've ever been down there and seen what it's like, it's just, it's horrible. And I'm saddened, I'm, I'm truly saddened that the soccer clubs and the neighbors haven't been able to, to come together, especially around this attempt at getting a permit, to come to some sort of agreement. It doesn't seem like it's any better than it was a few years ago. It leads me to believe that it's not the place for soccer. And I feel really bad because I'm all for soccer. But this, to me, just isn't the place. When our building inspector says that he wouldn't want his kids walking down the road, I totally understand that. And that's why the neighbors fear for their children, too. So, I think we have to be fair. I think the conditions are totally unenforceable. They haven't been followed, they haven't been enforced, because we just don't have the ability to do that. I will definitely vote no.
I think in a general sense, Western United was the bad guy. And when this all came up, the traffic had spiked, had increased, because all of a sudden, there were two clubs in where before, seven or eight, nine years ago, the, the issue wasn't as pressing. I also agree that the conditions were not met that were placed three and a half years ago. But I don't think they, I, they weren't met, but I don't think they were enforceable anyway. As Louis mentioned, you, you do was the, the use of that upper parking lot, it just wasn't going to work, and it couldn't be proven who was, who was in the lot, who wasn't in the lot, who was using it, and so forth. We can't do anything about the marina traffic, but we, but we can do something about, as a special permit about the soccer traffic. So, I think I would be in favor of allowing the permit with the conditions. At one point, a couple of years ago, we talked about the parking. It's very specific. When you're parking for soccer, you have to park on the right, and, and you park, you know, again, facing the fields. So, that vehicle count is a finite number. It's easily determined. And I remember at some point, we were talking about what is a good percentage, what is a good faith effort as far as carpooling, whether they use the upper lot or, or meet in Northampton somewhere and bring the kids in. If, if there could be thirty cars and we want fifteen cars, or whatever the number was, we, we were wrestling with a percentage that we thought should be met. I, I would be in favor of some condition, whether it's traffic counts or the number of vehicles that are parked there, and put the onus on the applicant. That it seems like, for the most part, some, some residents are saying, we don't want soccer. Most, I don't, I don't get that feeling, are saying, we're not opposed to soccer, we're opposed to the traffic. And we have, we have the opportunity to reduce the traffic, so I think we should make that happen.
They're obviously playing another sport down there, lacrosse.
Yeah, what was that?
Yeah, what, I mean, that to me is.
Oh, we can't ask. Do you want to, well, Carolyn, do you know about the?
Well, it's not, it was not under the soccer's control, obviously. It means the property owner who allows the function.
My point, yeah.
I'm trying to think about this from like the transportation and parking commission. This example goes on every week. You know, we do traffic calming issues. Then that, I mean, that's what we do. So, you're one neighborhood, and, and I know it's an upsetting situation because you've got a particular situation going on there, but, and I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about the vote just yet, but, but I can't help but give you some feedback that is, that you're like Austin Circle, and you're like Church Street, and you're like public streets where, where there's so much traffic that people are upset. So, you're not alone. And it's, I, I know it may feel that way because you've got a special case of why the traffic's there. But the marina was there for, for a long time. I mean, so some of this has developed and some of it hasn't. But, I mean, I'm interested in supporting sports for kids in town. I, I look forward to having the new fields out in Florence when we get that property up and running. So, I'm, I'm a little torn about the public road being used for a public service to get to an event that I think's a good event. And I, I didn't hear anyone say that soccer was the evil, really. It was that the traffic is the evil. And so, I'm.
Did you see on the street?
I rode my bike down there.
Well, I, I think they are alone, you know, because you have all these cars going all at one time. You know, it is different than a street that just has a lot of traffic. I think they are alone.
Do you think, um, that there's a, that if the transportation commissioner, whatever it is, really interests it, that there would be a transportation solution?
No, I would have to tell you that it's the most frustrating job to sit and listen to this every month, because we don't have the money to really do good solutions.
But money would find us here?
There are, there are methods you can take to contract it, but they're, you know, they're expensive.
Would you have to have police down there?
It's not like you can put in a twenty-eight-foot road with sidewalks on both sides and a bike.
Or big humps. I mean, I don't quite understand. Is there, does a solution exist that just hasn't been come up with, a creative solution?
To build a sidewalk all the way down from the parking lot? No.
I think we've tried for, for years here to, to come up with. It's, that's why I said it's like a round peg in a square hole.
Putting these conditions on are obviously, you know, people aren't taking them seriously. So.
Not at all.
Well, there's also a difference between traffic calming for speed and volume, sheer volume. So, the speed is not really a huge issue. I mean, the traffic counter showed that the speeds were really within the limits. So.
When they get to the counter.
The, you know, it really is a question, and it's not a perfectly paved, smooth road. So, it's got its own built-in.
I love the noises.
So, I think, you know, it's volume at a threshold.
What if you had, you know, like, some sort of permit process for the people who live there, that all the people who live there could have a pass, that said you could take their car past at a certain point?
With the marinas up there.
Oh, with the marinas.
It's a purpose.
For him.
It's, yeah.
It's really, this is really difficult.
Well, it is. And I don't like using Louie and run down here and count and mediate the traffic. I guess you're right.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just a case of enforcement. They shouldn't have to enforce something that they should, the soccer parents should be doing the right thing. You know, I mean, enforcement really is, is not about punishment, it's about compliance. And it didn't seem to work, even the threat of enforcement.
I, I don't, no, that that's necessarily the case. It seemed like before, when Western United was there, that the conditions were made, and that the traffic counts shown, although not all of them were taken. A reduction in traffic was shown. And it seemed like the argument was made. The reduction was all on Northampton Soccer Club's effort, because of their effort. Western United really wasn't playing a part of that reduction. So, it seemed, the indication was that a reduction could be had by Northampton Soccer Club. So, now that's all we're dealing with. I mean, I, I equate this almost to the, the road by Sheldon Field, where the indoor soccer, you know, it's crazy down there. And those games are every hour, and on a, you know, weekday nights and weekends for half the day. And those, you know, people coming in and out, in and out, and I, it's, I think it's a worse condition than here. And it seems like if people in general were happy with the traffic situation seven or eight years ago, and that's what we're going back to, that we could make that situation even better by imposing limits that are enforceable.
Well, I, I think they're only happy relative to what happened after Western United came. I think, my viewpoint is now is that soccer never should have been allowed down there. They never had a special permit. It's a street where the, this door is literally open right onto the street, on Old Ferry Street, I guess that's where we're talking about. The houses aren't right there. The front doors don't open into the street. And there's only a handful of houses. There's a lot of houses down there, or whatever it's called.
Right.
And I, I think that they had three years to try and find a solution to it. I don't think it's going to happen.
So, the idea of, you know, because I think, Colville brought it up, you know, that the reduction, reduction in games was what they really focused on. They didn't do games down there in the fall, but the practices are the things that are also.
Yeah, practices.
Is there, if there was an idea of no games but no practices, or practices but no games? Well, I think the hope is eventually, being farm is going to supplement or replace it.
But it's not going to be.
But that's going to be years.
Yeah.
Games and no practices is definitely a possibility. But I, I just reached a point where I've had enough. You know, I don't think there's any reason to compromise.
This is the first season without the under team at all, with the, the last few years.
The whole thing, if we weren't on the board, I think, three years ago, what, the way it kind of, kind of started was when Western United was added. The other thing, the soccer clubs have played there since early nineteen.
Well, I guess.
Without a permit.
Without a permit.
And I sort of wonder, did we, did we go amok and we could somehow straighten this out by, you know, a one-year permit, where we're trying to just play games, or as Louis said, put some very specific conditions on it, where we could see if we could get back to where it was and up straight.
I would want to think, in fact, my, I guess my hope for the night was that somehow the neighbors and the soccer clubs could come and present a united front. This didn't happen, and I don't think it's going to. I mean, I, I'm with Franny, I've had, I've had enough. I just don't think it's possible. And, you know, maybe nobody's the bad guy. It's just, isn't anything that's going to work.
The infrastructure just doesn't support the purpose.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, it seems like that, that they did a lot of rescheduling to, you know, in a certain way to, to reduce the traffic count. They just took the games and put them somewhere else and say, hey, look, our, our numbers are down. That's because they moved the games. Well, maybe if we add up the number of practice, the number of events, it doesn't matter if it's a game or a practice, that there are fifty such events, and we say, well, we'll give you thirty. And, and we'll give you thirty events in the spring and thirty events in the fall. And if there's one car per kid playing, and there's twenty-five kids, and you have twenty-five vehicles, we'll give you fifteen. Or whatever the number is, you know, reduce the number of events at the field, reduce the number of vehicles going down the road. And if they can meet it, they'll, that's great. If they don't meet it, then they're going to play somewhere else anyway. But it seems foolhardy to just say, nah, no, no soccer.
Who's been in Barstool, Mark?
No, it's not like, it, that's not, I mean, it, it, the number, the number of events would be, I would imagine, enforceable or more enforceable. I think before that the, the, the conditions on it were not enforceable. It was just too loose. And even when Louis said, when I'm there, I, you know, I don't know whose car this is in the lot. And people were saying that you were staging cars, you know, to get the count in the parking lot up, when they weren't real cars, that weren't, you know, and all these.
Or playing lacrosse.
Right, all these games were being played. And, and to me, that you, you just make it as specific as you can to make it enforceable. And, and, and give it a, you know, maybe a six-month, or give it a, give it through the spring and see how the spring goes, or something like that, just to see if it can work.
I have a naive question. What can the marina owner do with that, with those fields? What's he up to? If he decides to let it go out for the cost, two days a week, we miss that?
Well, no way. There's been an assessment at the city level that there's, that, that, well, commercial outdoor recreation requires a special permit. And any accessory, if there's anything that's considered accessory to the marina function, marinas are commercial outdoor use. Any accessory used that's not originally as part of the original permit, I should say, also needs its own special permit, which is why soccer's a part of it. So, there's not an automatic allowed use of those fields.
Well, we have two people who've expressed very clearly how they feel. There's, as just people know, there's a special permit. There's seven of us, yes, because things aren't here. And it's a majority of the nine would be.
Super majority, so it's.
They need five.
Oh, I'm sorry, five.
They need five, from Georgia.
Yeah.
So, even though there's only seven of us, they still need five to get the special permit. So.
And standards are, you know, it's about special permits. Is it appropriate, is it criteria they're going in for use? So, it's not just a technical review of site.
In one of those, we said it doesn't cost more than the.
Well, I don't know how it's various, but it definitely has to do with it.
It's definitely.
Yeah, determined on this for the neighborhood.
Not overload.
Yeah, I just don't see how it fits.
I wish there was just a way to say, I mean, what I struggle with is, is, you know, if not there, where? And that's the.
Well, I struggle with that, too. But it sounds like Western United found some places. Maybe we can work to get, you know, being an alley up senior, I don't know.
He must know that Western United, but most of, a lot of those kids weren't Northampton kids.
We found out that there were like one kid, a hundred teens.
Yeah.
Right. The Northampton Soccer Club, those are Northampton kids.
This is where we were three years ago, though. Nobody wanted to, you know, nobody wanted to stay in the soccer. So, it's like.
Even, I can tell you from the CPA stuff, even with being an alley.
Even, I can tell you from the C P S, I'm even with me in Allen, I have a feels, you know, it's still, it's just hugely popular, it's hugely important, and the question is how to, is there a way to do this, so that it's not so detrimental to the neighborhood? It just sounds awful.
I guess, well, I, um.
I mean, you feel like, I don't, I don't know if there's enough comfort level with, with doing sort of another trial round, getting, so, the only, the only issue about getting baseline count, or more counts, is sort of what the current function is, it doesn't really mean anything unless you tie, you know, there's some threshold number that they can not exceed with the number of vehicles, you know, in any given practice, or game, you might be able to set that as sort of a benchmark, but then it also requires, you know, someone's gotta go out there and check, so it's not really a perfect system.
Well, I guess that's why I was leaning towards, instead of the counts, give them a certain number of events, give them thirty games, no practices.
I, I mean, the number of events is an appealing idea, but the number of events that appeals to me is what, one per week, you know, they can put up with that.
One day or one game? I mean, one day.
One event.
Yeah, not one day.
Is it possible to take, send us back to the applicant and say, go back to your constituency? You know, you're not gonna get this if you keep doing what you're doing, and you come up with a solution, and you come back first.
I mean, that has been attempted previously, I think there's been a lot of energy combined on both sides, and it doesn't, you know, I think they've tried to create discussions, and I don't know that they're.
But if they know, they're, it's gonna be over. Because, I mean, it seems if we're trying to regulate and draw a measure, you know, it's not gonna work, if all the energy's coming from us to try to continue it.
Couldn't we say something like this, take the 2010 spring schedule, practices and games, cut it in half, say that's how many events this spring you can have, and for every one of those events, we want a car count of parked cars at that event, then we take that information into the fall schedule, and we, and we see what we can do with that. And either would we try to reduce the number of cars, or the residents are okay with the traffic, or whatever, it gives us something to, to work with.
Hard, hard count the people that go down there and drop their kid off, but we.
See, that's why, for me, that's why I'm saying, get rid of practices, because games are where the parents stay, practices is where you drop off your kid and go, go over. That's why.
I suspect a lot of the parents don't stay in the game.
But that's why I was saying, I mean, I, I'm completely okay with, if we, if we had to find a way to do it, it would be games only, no practice, and I could vote yes, so, so, I mean, Maryland State is her place, Brandy State is hers, I could vote for, whether or not it's a three-year or a perpetuity, is games only, you know, according to the schedule they had in 2010, no practice.
And I'm on the fence, but I would only give something for one year, and I'm not sure what something is yet, but I would not get into another three-year, we're not sure what it's gonna turn out to be, so.
I agree.
Okay, we give one year, one year games only, based on the schedule they had.
I was talking games, you're saying six to eight home games, thirteen, eight to ten teams per season, so eight games. Well, they're playing each other, and this will happen, forty events, forty games.
Well, they're not playing each other, no, we need to play each other.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
No, please.
That's between now and July, or between the spring.
No, spring schedule, fall schedule, roughly the same.
Well, no, I'm not even, I'm saying, because they've, they've done a lot in the fall to play on alternative fields, a lot of fields available, so I would say, using the number of games that were played in the fall of 2010, the spring of 2011, that's it. That's the games you get, because the fall, they made a lot of effort to play off-site, and so practices, I think, in the fall, they still have practices down there, and the spring, most everything's down there. But let's say, you get games in the spring, you get games in the fall, based on the schedule for one year, and that's it. And, as you said, counts for the games.
I don't think there's any guarantees on this thing, I mean, the only thing I can guarantee is that if we don't grant this permit, there's gonna be less traffic on that road, I can guarantee that.
That's true.
Though, there will be less traffic now than there has been in any, each of the past three years, just because of Western United.
Yeah, so it's still gonna be a lot of traffic.
And now we're eliminating practices, and the only thing we have left to do after a year is to eliminate the games.
But the game schedule we're talking about, going back to, is a reduced team schedule that they self-compose.
2010, 2011, which is.
On the, on the other hand, you know, from the neighbors there, you know, is it still too much? It's still, you know, bottom line, it's still included in practices.
I mean, this, this to me seems, that we eliminated one team, eliminated practices, we're reducing the schedule, this is clearly a blast shot. But then it's a, it's a limited one-year extension, and it doesn't work, that's it.
They have to come back in a year.
And see how.
Well, the permits haven't expired yet, they got one year.
I think the problem, the question is, we're naive to think we can control the schedule down there anymore. I mean, they're gonna, they're on practices, they're gonna have informal practices, because it's traditionally been down there.
Well, then, I guess, you know, Louis wants something tangible that he could admit, you know, it's very obvious the difference between practice and game, so.
Well, I think the night.
We deny the permit. Louis, because that's on his stuff.
It's not bad.
No, but I think if they said, if, if we add a certain number of games, finite games, and at each game, we want a car count, and that condition isn't met, then, I mean, can we do this, can we, instead of one year, can we do it through the spring season?
We're in the spring.
I mean, they're in it now, and say, well, and instead of giving it for two seasons, spring and fall, we just say, well, you know, this is such a contested issue, we'll give you, this is a three-month reprieve, or whatever.
Well, they have, they have a permit for it now, though, I'm not sure what's the expiration date.
They don't, there is no permit.
It's very likely.
This is for this spring? That's what I'm saying, so, so why not try to get through this spring, and if, if we come back in the fall, and it's just not working, then that's it.
It's like this kind of air hitting out the clock for permit last June.
All right, so the proposal on the table is, they're gonna have to end their practices down there through the spring, like games only, as the schedule is, and the traffic down for every game.
You wanna see a list of the games?
Well, we, we would have, or, it's gonna be an enforcement issue, if we grant the permit, it becomes an enforcement issue.
Right, but there was a, there had been a request, that maybe a schedule of games be given to the neighborhood as well as to the city.
Oh, the neighborhood, yes, right, right, right.
So then it's easier to enforce, obviously, you have the dates of those things happening.
Well, that in the fall, if we're here again, and the neighbors come and say, yeah, I have a schedule of eight games, but I can, I can tell you, you know, ten other days when there were no games, where people were coming up and down, up and down.
Well, the, the hard thing about the traffic becomes at that point, though, how do they know the difference between.
Well, Junior's dressed up in his soccer gear, and, you know, and a non-scheduled game.
Right, that's because.
No, I know, I know.
And, and you really think they're gonna come back and say, all is well in, not really?
No, but I wouldn't, I would.
So why, why are we postponing the inevitable?
I don't, I don't see it as being inevitable, if, if there was a consensus that five, six years ago, it wasn't so bad, and then it got horrible, well, we're going to five or six years ago, and then we're going even further than that.
I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure that there was a consensus that means everyone, you know, agrees against it, and I'm not sure that that was an informed consensus either, based on, you know, even increased traffic of the marina.
Well, I would support the proposal, Mark, as.
Like a three-month reprieve.
Three months, just because I think the need for soccer fields is just desperate.
So the proposal is, three months, no practice, games only according to the current schedule, the schedule has to be distributed both to the city and to the neighbors, and traffic counts at the game, or parking, parking counts at the games.
Drop-off counts, if you're gonna count the parking, cars parked there.
Right, I'm just not sure how you're gonna, yeah, I mean.
Well, you can get somebody with a.
Quicker.
And who's doing this counting?
Your clothes. Well, the neighbors can do the counting, so you guys. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out some way we can make it.
I mean, they could also do the split by, it sounded like it was pretty clear, that people who come to play soccer are going in one direction, and the other traffic's going in another direction.
Well, then some of the parents get clever and park it in there.
What's that?
Then the parents get clever and park it in the marina.
No, there's sign, it's the, it's first time in the week, it's very clear that all soccer counts, the marina doesn't want anyone left, or the one. No, I know, I'm just saying.
Who are you gonna say do the traffic count then, if, if, are you okay with the soccer club doing the count?
No. What, what is that?
The question's the counts, you want the counts from the games, the soccer lovers get to do the counts of the games.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
Just, just, I.
No, no.
No, it's a point of.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
I, I can't hear, I've got one ear and a ear that's dead, I'd just like to get a little bit closer. That's all, thank you. Just went, battery went dead.
Well, I think if we're gonna manage that, and there's some issues with the validity of counts, then the planning board needs to, they have to see, do the counting.
Who is that gonna do?
Well, I don't know, but I don't think it's right to put it on the neighbors, and I don't think it, it'll be, I think it will be contested if it's done by the soccer. So I don't think that's gonna work.
Well, the only reason that the way the count would have any value is if it kind of, all the traffic in, and counted, the soccer, because then you, you have to separate the two, and if you only count the soccer traffic, it doesn't really matter unless you play with the whole setup, so you'd have to count.
You know, for people living down there, traffic's, traffic, so anytime you add something that requires a special permit that really shouldn't be there, it's, it's something you can say no to.
I also don't think it's fair to just have this rosy remembrance of how great things were when it was just soccer before, because people, it's, it's intimidating coming for the planning board, and it's intimidating to complain about stuff, and people feel feeless about it too, and they just, you know, they put up with it, but it builds up, builds up, and then after a while, it's too much.
All right, well, let's do a wrap then, so we have one proposal, which is, three month extension, no practices, games only, I think the traffic count, I just can't see how the traffic count could be done with any, it wouldn't matter if we only count soccer traffic, and we don't count all the traffic, so you need some mechanism, if we're gonna do counts, you gotta count all of it, and then you have to count what goes to soccer, otherwise.
We need a fifty thousand dollar traffic, which, um, it's Dalton.
No.
Maybe you have your traffic traffic.
Yeah, but I mean, you need somebody to, you need more than one counter.
I said the point of clarification, Tim.
Did you ask the point?
Yeah.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
What's that?
I just wanna ask that.
Mark wants to ask Tim a question, so if you're making a.
Oh, I don't know, it's getting careful, is that really, I don't think we, any.
Well, what's the point of what I'm beginning to want?
How, how many games, how many teams, how many games?
In the spring? Are those good?
Yeah.
Do people wanna know that, how many games?
No.
Is that they had about twelve teams?
I was gonna say, what, what if, it, it seems like the only enforceable thing you can do is the number of games, so if there are ten teams, and they all play six to eight home games, so say it's six, sixty games, what if we said, you're allowed thirty home games, no practice, thirty games, work it out.
Well, that was, yeah, that was, I think.
Well, which is less than.
Make half of what.
Yeah, which is even less than, you know, than the current spring schedule, or whatever it is, I'm saying reduce.
Well, whichever is less.
And then no, and then no counts.
No counts, just, just restrict the number of games to such an extent that it gives, you know, each, each home team, four or five home games, and that's it.
That's gonna be three home games.
Three, I think, if you have ten teams, that's three home teams, but it's not like, you know, it's six to ten teams.
And then like you get indoors with traffic counting.
No, no, because there's no, no.
And just say, that's it, you, thirty.
I mean, they're, they're already gonna have to spread out to find places to practice.
But they did that in the fall, they moved.
The deal was just lacrosse and baseball, all of soccer.
But they're gonna have, certainly they're gonna have to do that if we say, you know, you know, no soccer.
I don't think.
I'm just trying to find something.
Yeah, my, my, my thought is, no matter what we do, the traffic count situation is gonna be.
Right.
The hope, the reason for the three years was that, to give the city time to come up with other places to play soccer.
Because I remember city council being here, promising.
They came, something, came up with something, uh, a theme farm, but now they got.
Well, that's gonna take like sixty years.
It'll take three more years.
That's gonna take three more years.
What was the city and the soccer clubs? And Western United helped by, you know, going away.
All right, just so we can, we're gonna have to, it's a little before eleven, so I kinda wanna, we're gonna have to wrap this up. So we have two options, well, the options for us as individuals, again, it's, we're gonna need a motion, first of all. We have, the options of creating a permit that we might be able to vote for would be three months, even the spring season, I'm not sure if it's three months, whatever the spring season is, no practice, and X number of games, half, whatever the number of games they have, cut it in half, or Mark said thirty, just a random number.
Well, whichever is less, I mean, that might be more than a half, more than a year.
I don't know, yeah, right, so it's, it's, thirty or half, whichever is less. And it's only for the spring, and then, why are you saying at the end of that time, we have another, they have to be applied for the fall?
And either the soccer club will say, no, we can't manage thirty games anymore, and that, this isn't working out, or they'll say, we can live with this, or the residents may say, that it's just as bad as it ever was, and then we'll visit this again in the fall, and everybody's good, or we'll just stop talking about it.
Okay, so that's, that's what we have, thirty games, spring season, no practice, permit expires.
Thirty games or half, whichever is less.
Whichever is less. All right, so closed public comments, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll second.
Did that also include, what's the schedule?
Yes, yeah. Contributing the schedule to the city and to the road. Any further discussion on that? So again, special permit, so the seven of us, but there's gotta be five to approve it, now, if this does not, that's right, if it, if it doesn't pass, we don't have the motion, is that, that's just it?
If it doesn't pass, it's rejected.
Right, okay, all right.
I'm a soccer fan, I'm a little bothered with it, I mean, when is it starting?
Never, indoor, winter they go indoor, and it's great.
Well, when does it start, you know?
Yes.
Yeah.
It might be in the wire.
All right, so let's move, the, any other discussion on the motion we have? All in favor of the motion? Five will oppose, two, so the motion passes with the conditions as we have now, which are, thirty games, no practices, spring session only. Or, sorry, whoever's less.
Please come back and tell us how it goes.
We did already.
There was.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
I think we're gonna pass on the other business we have, um, King Street, Big House, if people were in and having.
I gotta get on.
No, I mean, I'll get to it.
Yeah, we should do this.
Um, well, that's the. I don't think we have ones on that board coming in today. So, you remember the alternative path looking at the hospital was, um, go up the sledding hill, um, it was gonna be eight feet, about two minutes, they were gonna remove the strong part of the hill.
So it started over there?
The path or.
Sorry, we can't hear up here.
The path, um, going up the, it was bike top connect, but it worked, it was good stuff.
Right.
Was designed to go up the sledding hill, I mean, just inside office, so there's minimal, um, service can be used in existing layout essentially, and, um, they were gonna get these, and rebuild that path, and that will be the connector, um, it's gonna be eight feet. Um, the, they got an agreement from Smith, um, there was sort of a barrier they came across of which, um, ADA, who, um, under any act, where they would get quite so much of the traffic for, but because the grades are very steep at that hill, the requirements for leveling off, and, um, then, um, creating, um, a standard, to meet the standard for ADA, um, would require significant, um, change to the path, and we're already widening it to eight feet, and we're gonna, um, do drainage improvements and a whole lot of yards, um, the, um, additional changes to the path will require further approach to the tree belt, and those protected trees, which you all wanted to maintain, those, um, um, specimen trees, so they went, the, the alternative was to, you know, check in with, um, the ADA to see if, they, because it's an existing path, so they really have to come into compliance, they got this letter back that you all got from their consultant that does ADA work, saying that, um, basically, if they do anything other than plan or improvement, keeping it an existing path, then that's gonna trigger compliance with ADA, so they can't widen it eight feet without triggering full compliance, which then means they could be much more, um, cuts through the bankments, which would probably have caused a lot of root damage. Um, so what we talked to them about was, um, because we think the length is more important than the width of the path, is going back down, keeping it same width, which is between five and six feet, but reconstructing it there, um, and then getting a waiver essentially from the county, because then it would be considered an existing path actually. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed, and you think that that's the better solution, and try to find another location, or having to go up the Route sixty-six with the official bike path, this is sort of, you know, off-road.
Yeah, it seems to me that we were pretty anxious to get that connection, but it is awkward steep, and, and I think we, we sort of crossed our fingers and voted for it, essentially.
And it's steep up Route sixty-six too, so you know, but, but the weird thing about it is, that's okay.
Yeah, I think.
They would allow you to use that as the bike path, even though it still doesn't be ADA.
I think we have to go with the Route sixty-six route myself, yeah, I haven't made a big study of it, I mean, I would like to see that sidewalk improved enough so it's least it's safe and walkable, but I don't think we can turn it into a bike path, it's just not gonna work.
Well, there are places in the network that go below eight feet, where you can bridge crossings or something like that.
Oh, yeah, no, and, yeah, but, yeah, that's true.
Could you, what surface are you coming up, you know, going up the hill? Originally by two minutes, they were gonna rip out what's there, put, you know.
Which is concrete.
Raise a couple inches of gravel, you know, make it stable, and then, um, so it would be totally reconstructed in its footprint, essentially, um, and so staff recommendation would be that, you know, that we keep the connector, because it's more important to have it go there, instead of just putting it right next to the road, where you're not getting the grades compliant anyway, um.
Immediately.
I agree with that, I mean, that's where we wanted it, and we get, we knew it's steep.
Yeah.
It's still ridiculously steep.
Right, and we wouldn't want to jeopardize the trees to reach ADA, and to make that thing ADA compliant would be.
Yeah, it'd be ridiculous.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be awful, and so, it just doesn't make sense, and so.
The bike paths have to be ADA compliant?
Well, there's different standards, but it still doesn't need that standard, so it's like eight, eight point three percent, instead of five percent, that, that you have to have, um, I mean, I don't know the exact details, but you also have to have landings or different spots for certain rest thing, or any of them, so. That's, that was the only item on that, I wouldn't.
What are people doing now, are they just biking up sixty-six, 'cause I haven't biked it in a while.
Um, yeah, they probably just go up sixty-six, or they can go up the path, they have, you know, if they're up for it, but, um, I think as more residents move up there, it's gonna be, uh, you know, an issue, and it's certainly a much more direct path, if you come down that hill, or go up that hill, and going around on the road, and then coming across downtown, so.
So do you mean?
After a few people have the traffic, things are.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I just wanted to bring you up to date on sort of where that was, and I think, based on hearing, it sounded like that was the important link, and also preserving the trees, and, um.
Uh, we asking to vote on that thing, or are you just giving us a heads up?
Um, I'm giving you a heads up, if you wanna vote in support of that, that would be great.
Wasn't part of it, they also Smith, did they do it all?
It is, we got an agreement from Smith, so that was the other piece of it, they had to go to Smith and negotiate with East, and they did that, so I think that's right.
Good branding, right, that's why we're, so, you wanna vote?
Yeah, just to, um, you know.
Moral to the court?
And what, what was it, were moral is important?
Keep the path in the alignment, but acknowledging that it's not gonna be the original eight feet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we might.
I move.
But if it's terribly steep, it's hard to do that on a really narrow path, so.
But it's, it's, that steepness exists up the road anyway, so if somebody wants to take that sidewalk, they're just gonna ride their bike up the sidewalk.
You might do that anyway.
Right.
Everybody, anybody second?
Second.
Any more? Uh, Mark for you. Any other discussion? All fair? Right? Um, all right, um, so the twenty-eighth is our next meeting, we don't have anything in the Democratic Senate, so we're gonna continue, the two things we're gonna get through tonight, no permits, and I hope that we can get a permit after two weeks.
Right.
So, um.
I have something, Darren's part is in the mail.
I'll be with Stella just in a minute.
Derby party, I remember this.
Derby party, cancel. I'm a derby party every year.
Oh, uh, any, any other?
There's gambling, there's hats.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Drinks, there's fun.
Yeah, all fair? All fair?
Oh, good.
Thank you.